Great, thank you and welcome to the public for the special media council to be held today on July the 5th, 2023. The call to me to order at about 5:17pm. We're a little behind. We had a presentation earlier. And we just working through some technical issues to get the screen prepared for you to understand what the presentation is about. So with that being said, I'll leave it right over to the CEO to do some introductions and get the meeting underway. Thank you.
So thanks your worship and glad to be in front of council today. What we're going to present to council and the public is the progress we've made in approximately the last five months. We have council's budget approval to move forward with phase one and phase two for the Active Living Centre project. And I'm going to use the terminology today. We're at the ground level. I don't like high level because that's what we talked about five months ago. You know what we're presenting today is, you know, what we envision the building looking like. Some of the programming features, some of the landscape features to share with council and the public as well as the budget, which is a real budget. You know, of course, it's not gonna lie, it's a large number, but it's what comes with the project. So what we wanted to show today is the progress point we're at in 2023. And answer any questions council has and of course talk about the path forward to get us to the latter part of 2023. And starting to look at phase three of the project, which will position us to move closer to getting to a tender point. If council is agreeable to that. So no formal motions today of council. But about a 40 minute presentation and then another 20 minutes for questions that council may have. So I'm going to ask my colleagues, our project team who's in Marathon today with us to introduce themselves. Starting with Ian and then moving to the left and then we'll jump right into the presentation. Council can ask questions as we go or if you're more comfortable at the end, at the end. So with that, I'll turn over to Ian.
Hi, your worship and councillors of the town of Marathon. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here today to talk about this really very exciting project. My name's Ian Hill. I'm the principal architect with Critchley Hill Architecture. And I'm working with my other team members here as part of the initial concept design and site concept design.
Thanks Ian, Mayor and council. Thank you. Joe Fry with Happa Collaborative, principal with our landscape architecture and urban design practice. Very excited to be back home presenting this work.
Hi, I'm Amy Germick. I am with Perkins and Will and architect and designer on project.
Good afternoon. I'm Phil Fennec. I'm principal and recreation planner with Perkins and Will as well, helping Ian and Joe on this project. And I guess with that, I'll turn it over and share the screen.
Great, thanks and welcome everybody.
Okay, so what we'd like to cover this afternoon is just a quick commentary on the consultation that had taken place. Over the past number of years, we'll then describe our program that we have for this, for the Active Living Centre that's being developed. We'll talk about sustainability that's associated with the development of the project. And Joe is then going to talk about the context. That really is the site and where we've been developing this program. Phil and Amy will then have some detail to talk about the concept and the way that we've arranged the program elements, the design. And then we can talk about some next steps as we wind up our presentation.
Great, thanks Ian. And on that, council, if we went through the whole presentation, you feel more comfortable or do you want to stop and ask as we go to each slide?
We'll just do it organically then and if we have questions as we look.
Just lift your hand up and let me know. Great, thank you.
So under the consultation, what I really like to acknowledge here is that, you know, the town of Marathon has endeavored and done a lot of work to develop. The community's not just interest on this project, but the imperative of, you know, how important this project is to the community of Marathon. And we certainly as a team here have made ourselves aware of the history behind where we are here today. I think what I really do want to draw to everyone's attention, most important item here on this particular slide is that 93% of the community is in support of the new Active Living Centre. And that really, it does acknowledge that it's not 100 and at the same time, you know, it's 93%. There's an overwhelming support to develop an Active Living Centre here in Marathon. As well as to acknowledge that the community had five consultation processes in its history. Which is a very extensive internal analysis here in your community and that's really important to the foundation of any successful project.
So from that community consultation, the following programs were deemed to be the most important. The first being an ice rink, the second spectator seating for that ice rink as well as a track. An aquatics component, a multi-purpose rooms and a dedicated seniors program room and a community movie theatre. Future programs that were on the list were bowling as well as curling.
In addition to that, we also have, and you'll see in the presentation, how we've incorporated landscaping park elements associated with the building. Very clearly heard and a desire for playgrounds, dog parks, trails, active uses in and around the building as well as and strongly related to the indoor and outdoor functions of the ALC.
A little bit about sustainability. These are early days, but it's good to start thinking about sustainability because the higher the higher the goals are in sustainability, it makes better financial sense because you can attract funding. So the recently closed GICB grant requirements required a building to be designed to net zero. Required it to be serving a community of high need, demonstrating climate resiliency, accessibility. Demonstrating community stakeholder engagement, including indigenous consultation, reporting on community employment benefits. And all these projects have to be endorsed by council. They can't be sole sourced. And they must have secured construction funding or have a date when it will be secured. And so the criteria of evaluating it based on meeting all those requirements and being shovel ready. And demonstrating that you're increasing accessibility in the community. You're achieving net zero carbon performance and having a plan ready to be climate resilient and having confidence in delivery. So these are the criteria to attract some significant dollars in funding for that fund. There are other funds available. There's the disaster mitigation adaptation fund. There's funds for greening brownfield sites. There's infrastructure funding, community building programs and green municipal funds. So these are a range of funds that I'm sure you're aware of, that once we know what the project is about and what it can achieve, they can be targeted. So here's some range of dollars that you could attract under natural infrastructure funding. You could get up to 250,000 to a max of, or it's from 250,000 to a max of $1 million. Disaster mitigation adaptation fund, it's a minimum $1 million project value, which we will meet. Required up to 40% federal contribution for eligible costs. For community building program, there's brownfield development, redevelopment for culture, sport and recreation opportunities there. And green municipal fund, which we talked about in a similar way. That varies from $5 million to $10 million with a combination of 25% given as a grant and the rest as low interest loans. So these are some of the funding that's available that we can help you target. Once we have a kind of prescribed project budget and go ahead.
When we, when we talk about community in need, if we look at the region as a whole, it's no secret that the infrastructure along a lot of the communities is aging out. Would that obviously benefit our case for our infrastructure here being in brand new in Marathon? And the region as a whole being able to kind of access that on?
I believe so because you're demonstrating a priority of need, right? So you're a community of need. So I believe that would help, yes.
Okay. In regards to the actual studies that we performed over the, say, 16, 17, 18 years before the pandemic hit. We did meet with our First Nations neighbours and talk about this very important project to both Marathon as well as them. Also the five consultation process we held over about a year and a half process in that timeline. That's all relevant today.
Yes.
Because we don't have to go back to that and revisit some of the criteria that you had in question.
Not to our knowledge, unless it changes, but not to our knowledge.
Good. And I know that from our relationship with our neighbours that we would definitely obtain a letter of support for this project. Because they utilize facilities as well in our community and.
It's our understanding that that letter of support is very important.
Sure, absolutely. We've had discussions with them and again, I know they're just announced funding in their community for a covered facility for an outdoor ice rink. But the reality is we need an ice rink that's covered, utilized for hockey within our community as well as the other portions of the project that's being built. Thanks.
Indigenous support and indigenous use is very important.
Right.
So over to Ian.
Yeah, so under site analysis, this is just an update. As part of the first phase of the work, almost half, half the work is really associated with the site analysis. There's tremendous amount of study going on right now and they're about 66% through. They're two thirds complete. We do need that last third to be finished up and all of that data to be submitted to, you know, the architectural team as well as the structural engineering team. Those are really the two main teams that need to have this information as it influences our design. It influences all the work that Joe's doing and that Phil, Amy and I are working on. And we look forward to having the completion of those reports. We were updated just as recent as today. We need another eight weeks of work to bring all of those studies. Prior to those reports being submitted, we will be looking and getting some information as some of the scientific data is coming in. Some of the sampling should be ready in a couple of weeks. And we analyze that as we go. So if we believe that we have to pivot or we have to change, we have to do something different. We're not going to wait two months for that. We're certainly going to be actively engaged in understanding it as we go. And so that's where we are with the site analysis and those are the timelines that we have at the moment.
Great. Any questions, Matt?
Yeah, just the, often brownfields are redeveloped for other structures. This isn't due to construction in Canada and Ontario.
Yeah, and maybe a little bit more informal, councillor Ray. I had a retired geotechnical engineer 10 years ago who was 70 years old and came to me at the time I was a principal architect. And he said, I hate to break it to you, Ian, but I don't think you'll ever have a greening field, say, in the rest of your career. And I have to share with you, he's almost close to the truth, particularly with a footprint. It's 73,000 square feet, no doubt in our northern communities and for me from here at Canora. That when I get involved in small projects, I do find kind of fresh sites or smaller sites. But the moment that we begin to capture a larger footprint, we really are developing on the perimeters of our community. More often because the centre of our community is already built and the perimeter of our communities, whether it's in a city or a town. In 2023 is typically brownfield. So the good news is, is that this isn't the first time. And that the teams that we have in place and the risks that we've worked through and the challenges and the opportunities is familiar territory and it's just doing it properly, being diligent about it, being transparent about it. And always keeping people up to date. So that's the longer answer.
That's a great answer. Thank you.
And Ian, I'm glad that because the fact that your page is planned, that you address it to the public. Because the public are out there watching this meeting and saying clearly that more information will be coming. You're about 66% of the information gathering on the site. And once all that information is gathered, you will finalize the report to our administration and they will run back to council.
Yeah.
So a couple of months out from that full information gathering report.
Absolutely.
You're good. Thank you for that.
Despite the fact that it's a brownfield site, I think this slide demonstrates that it's actually a very spectacular one as well. I think we're very blessed to be on the edge of Lake Superior with the memorial forest and the pre-Cambrun Shield. And the Great Lakes hold me together. And I think that's part of the reason why the group of seven was attracted to this place. Why it has been registered not just locally but internationally as a place of significance. So the fact that we now have a site that we can unlock, its industrial legacy notwithstanding. You know, it is a remarkable and powerful place. And I think it's incumbent on this community to really take advantage of that opportunity that's now available.
So Joe, just for a second, if you don't mind, because you know, it's great to hear that coming from you because you are a resident of this community. You grew up here. And coming back and seeing that, because I think what happens in the majority of our community members is they live here all their life and they don't see the value. No, we take it for granted, the reality that we have this beauty in our backyard. To redevelop the site and make it, you know, part of that group of seven 1920 era. You know, the spectacular 60 some plus sites along that corridor along Xper from Harrow Bay basically to Naze. Is something we can really promote and we've had the opportunity as this community to do that, but the pandemic really hindered us. So we can take that now with the ALC Centre and continue to grow that and then make this a not only a spectacular facility for the community, but also for visitors alike who look at all that information.
And that's not to dismiss, Phil, on the next slide, boat parking, this is exactly the context that you're showing. There is, this site actually unlocks this connection between the Naze Park and Puckasaw. The work at Pebbles Beach, Pebble Beach will also be part of that linkage. And so we can provide this public amenity, this waterfront trail. That doesn't necessarily need to be on streets. It can connect right along the water's edge. And so the location of this and the sighting of this building is really potent with the potential. And notwithstanding that, I think that this site has always been the economic engine of the community. I have to say, I've only worked one summer at the mill and yet I don't know this site very well. Just walking around the site, there's so many features of it that I was completely unaware under the waterfront edges. We took a boat tour around there this morning. It's an anonymous site to many people in town. And so the fact that we can open it up, still allow some of this industrial heritage, that waterfront edges to remain and be celebrated as part of our history is a really great opportunity. And layered on top of that would be your relationship with going to First Nations. This is their building as much as it is the towns. But there's an incredible, and I have to say, we've worked with a lot of First Nations on the west coast and in the prairies. Never have I seen an opportunity where a municipality and a First Nation have worked so closely together. And so to be able to represent that as a true act of reconciliation is just an immense opportunity for everyone here. So this building and this site will certainly lead to that. Site considerations, and this is really just a diagram to show that our entire team is looking at how this building relates to this incredible waterfront location, whether it's views through the building, from the town, looking to the building. From the water back to the land. These are all things we're analyzing. Looking at how this site, the sighting allows for future phasing and development opportunities related to the ALC. We talk about high road and low road where the trail connection from park to park is also more intimate trail connections. Includes this low road condition along the water's edge. So this is regional but also local condition. Using the building, a large building to create microclimate. So south facing edges that captures sun in the middle of the winter, but also protect that edge from winds coming off of the harbour. And looking at future phasing opportunities when we want to add to this building in, you know, years down the road. And stormwater is only one aspect of ecological resiliency of this site, returning nature, returning vegetation. But also how we manage stormwater in a more appropriate way than we have in the past. But we already know that there are features on this site we can capture. And with a roof that will largely, almost be almost two acres in size, we can capture that rainwater and return that to the lake as well. So these are all site considerations that the entire team continues to look at.
So Joe, some of the, some of the wrong links around the community since the time of the initial studies going forward and consultation process with the community. Was, you know, consideration and discussion and some pushback on the reality that Salt Lake Superior, it's cold and it's windy. So how would that impact us in regards to the design, development and an aspect of continuing the heating that facility? Would it be a higher cost, lower cost, how to build in, as Phil said, with the green aspect and meeting all the new requirements? Is the lake going to hinder that and impact us in regards to those operations?
No, I think, I think to meet your sustainability targets in today's world, it's the amount of glazing that you put in. Like we're at a 40% or less glazing. So where you put that glazing is important. But I don't think the location of the building, certainly the sighting will be looked at from a sustainability point of view. But I don't think it would increase the heating. I mean, the zone we're in will, but all buildings will be, right? So, but I think it's really where we put the glazing and how we shape the building is going to be important.
And Mayor Rick, I'd like to add to that. The, one of the outstanding, and then there was just some of the research and the homework that, you know, I had undertaken. And I'm sure Phil, you know, in his, you know, explorations of this building type and also, you know, Phil and Amy's relationship to their own Lake Ontario and the way that Lake Ontario is influencing the development of the buildings that are near the waterfront. I mean, there's a very significant geothermal opportunity with the proximity of this building to the lake. It will be analyzed as part of the design development. That's in our phase three. And our mechanical engineering team really will be looking very hard at what that can present. So in many ways, yeah, it has some exposure for certain, to stay, to say there isn't wind coming off the lake. I think some of the things that Joe's picked up on that the entry will buffer that, you know, the coming in on the other side of the building is a good thing. You know, when we talk about a microclimate, but it's, I think some of these offsetting measures of its proximity to the water and the heating system really are, you know, are in and that's what we're kind of looking into.
Great. I'm glad you heard all that because that's the kind of stuff that we need to share the public when we have this concern raised. And we could say they're being addressed by the architectural design, the landscaping, the location of all those various things. Thank you.
And yeah, maybe just a question too about the, when you talk about glazing, I assume you're talking about windows. So you want south facing for the passive solar, but the view is to the north. So how do you sort of maximize the view, but also maximize the source of the game?
Northern light is almost your best light, right? Because the way the building's oriented now, you're taking advantage of that north and the south. East and west are the ones that are hard on control or the ones that give you the most heat gain, right? So right now, just basic orientation is working in our favor.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Could you hear from an expert rather than us?
I don't know. I Googled it.
I mean, the unique thing, and Amy, absolutely, like in the pool environment, you know, so just experiencing one of the recent, you know, pools in B C Bay. I mean, they have algae blooms because the window is more faced to the south. So in the controlled environment of sun actually hitting pool water, you want that in a manner of which you control. Because if you had it facing south, then now all of a sudden you've got all these window treatments that you're going to have to factor into. So I think it's really, that pool orientation is really sensitive to, and here we are able to kind of swing it to the north and see the lake at the same time. So that was kind of a nice win. Concept design and cost estimates. So I do want to distinguish on this particular slide. When we talk about project budget, we could, you know, also it's synonymous with what we call project cost. It's important to delineate that the $56.5 million that is, you know, that we've analyzed as a project cost. Is associated with what we're referring to as a base program. So Phil is going to talk about enhanced programming elements that would be above and beyond the $56.5 million. So the way that this is broken down, we just want to demonstrate that we are acknowledging within that project cost. The costs that are significant costs that we refer to as soft costs and fees and the construction contingency. There is an allocated budget towards that. There's an acknowledgement that there's furniture fittings and equipment in the project cost. The HST and the applied rate that the municipality has is within that number. And that we're acknowledging that there will be market escalation. So we have to start with something. We have to start with a date. And the target date that we're using is the quarter, the quarter four of 2024. That would be the strategic date based on where we're at right now in order to tender out documents to receive a construction cost. So we have to escalate our number to that time period and that's built in to the project cost. And so when we take those four items out, we're left with a cost of construction. That's important to the architectural and consulting team that we use that number. We have to be cognizant that there's the other four in the project cost, but we really start to zero in on that $48.4 million. Because it's associated with the size of our building and it starts to help us at a very high level, understand what a cost per square foot is. This is a high level analysis. There's a lot more work that goes into the costing. In the subsequent phases turns into a binder thick of analysis. And this is the very first beginning of analysis with the information we have today that we have presented to our cost estimator. And that we were able to summarize, analyze and then present, you know, to this slide. So that's kind of an overview of where we're at and where we're headed with the next phase of work. Any questions, Matt?
Thanks, Rick.
That's a big number, but you know what I think about when you buy a house or you buy a car and you hope to spend half of what you end up spending. And you look at the number and you take a gulp and then you go about doing the financing, figuring out whether you can afford it or not. And so I think that's, it's great to have the number because then at least we're having an informed discussion. And it gives administration a chance to go and say, can we afford this? So it's excellent to have the number. I wish it was less, but I think it's important that it's a real number.
And councillor Ray, Phil on the next slide has some really good information that's recent and relevant. Just kind of a comparative story of what's happening in our construction market and with projects in the, in community centres and recreation centres.
Anybody else? Good, thanks.
Yeah, to that point, we have four projects, similar community centres under construction and two on the boards. And what this demonstrates is the impact really of the pandemic that everybody has read about. The supply chain issues, the construction labor shortages, the spike in costs that have not leveled a little bit. But they've not come back down to what they were pre-2019. So you see a project there like Georgina, which we set a budget in the quarter four 2019. And we went to tender quarter one 2020, just before the pandemic started to have impact. And we timed it to have just a 5% increase based on our budget. However, the other projects that got tendered in the middle of the pandemic, when things began to go astray in terms of escalation, especially at the end of 2021. You saw, you see increases of 25%, 52%, 30%, significant jumps that we couldn't control. And the projects are still going ahead, but they have to be adjusted. The last three projects are projects that have been tendered now closer towards the end of the pandemic. And there's the escalation has taken place and you're now beginning to adjust to that reality. Like Peterborough, budget set for a single pad arena, a double pad arena that was more than they anticipated, but not significantly more. And then projects that were, we've now done some first level costing has been adjusted to the new reality, yet to be tendered. But you can see those numbers are more than, let's say, what we did in Georgina in 2019. So these are real examples just to, you know, further bolster what you've all been reading about and experiencing in your own community.
Yeah, with that being said, from a more generic downfall of earth scenarios at the kitchen table, I think most people understand that the cost with their own home operational aspects. And over the last, you know, four years, pandemic included, but and coming out of the pandemic with inflationary values of six and seven, eight percent. And we're trying, you know, obviously governments are trying to do that, bring that down with the increase in, you know, the interest rates. But reality is it's still impacting each and every one of us. So that being said, now throw that into a facility of this size, when we started out this in sixteen and around a thirty million dollar mark, and here we are some seven years later, looking at, you know, closer to fifty five to sixty million dollars. All being said, and Ian said very clearly was the fact that this is Q four, twenty twenty four numbers, best case scenario. Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, and the other thing I've heard is that I don't think we have the luxury of waiting because of the state of our facility. But I've heard people say, well, why don't you just wait till the prices come down from folks that work in the industry? My sense is they're not coming down, is that your sense as well?
They're never coming down.
Yeah, they, I mean, there are more senior architects to Phil and I that have practiced longer, but we're kind of in our, you know, our senior years of practicing. Our last really challenging, the only time that I saw prices truly hold flat and they didn't go down, they just held, was in nineteen eighty eight, nineteen eighty seven, after October, crisis of a very substantial large market crash. And prices held for six to seven years at a minimum. Prices began to increase in nineteen ninety seven, almost ten years later. So that was one unique period of time, but they didn't go down, they never went down, they held. And then they, you know, they kind of climb up. So cost estimators on a normal cycle use three to four percent market escalation in a normal cycle. Yeah, and we anticipate, we're being told that we're headed towards a normal cycle in twenty twenty four.
Mr. Speaker.
Just to go back to the second slide and going back to our public consultation, some of that seven percent, you know, that didn't support the active living center, you know, some of the questions that were posed, well, why can't we just retrofit our current facility? Or why can't we just renovate it, right? That's not a possibility, right? It's not even a discussion item. You know, we're doing that work right now and looking at how much life we have left in that current building. But the reality is it needs full replacement, right? So we can't go back in time and say, well, you know, let's retrofit, that's not a reality. You know, the reality going forward is we need a new building. You know, what council decides upon that new building looks like in cost, that's the road we're headed down.
Yeah, I think we've garnered enough information with the public that realize that we need to go. And the ninety three percent is a good cross reference of the community. We know that, we just need to know what we can nail down as a number. And how do we address the financing in that facility through various means of government grants and subsidies and loans at low interest, corporate sponsorship and actually for that matter, community sponsorship as well. So all those seem to be key part of this project going forward. Anybody else?
I'm just gonna step over.
Yeah, absolutely. Counselor, thanks.
I'll just do a quick overview of the site master plan for everyone's benefit, just to orient everyone to the site. The mill proper, mill proper to the left hand side of the image. The descent down Stevens Avenue is just off of this image to the right hand side. And the A L C is located in what was largely where the chip piles sat in the, in the Woodyard area. A relatively flat area, relatively unencumbered with any utilities, et cetera. And one of the things that would attracted us to this site is a test fit for the building and its associated needs, including three hundred parking stalls, which is what Amy and Phil had told us is what we need. So it's a large site, but it fits substantially in this area. So the access would be off of Winton Street from the right hand side, westward down the, down the cut. And the first view of the building would be from that, from that view. We're showing the parking on the south facing side, but also a plaza space outside on the south and east corner of the building that provides direct access, pickup and drop off for seniors, but also for both the pool and arena users, ranked centrally located. We are showing test fits for other development parcels. You can see the bars of a standard double loaded corridor buildings that would be, that could be residential, could be seniors living, could be hotel uses, all to be determined. But we are really just trying to figure out the test fit and its relationship to the A L C. And then also showing what a warehouse and, or, you know, I guess industrial uses could be to the west side and might be associated with port activities. So the building acts, when you think of it in context of the marina, which is off of the image and to the north and east, this acts as one end of the dumbbell of the waterfront parcels. And all of the space in between becomes opportunities for all sorts of recreational opportunities, some of which might be just leaving the site as it is and just allowing it to be. And you can see we're proposing a bit of a wetland area, which is where we actually were out there just this afternoon. There's a spring that emerges there. So there are opportunities for ecological restoration and water course improvements as part of the site.
So just for the viewing public, so if Phil could take that down to where the warehouse type facilities up on top of there. So that there would be part of the actual core area, the commercial development. So that would be a buffer along that corridor.
That's right. And we see the roadway, the Winton Street could be access to the port activities or it could be through the, I can't remember the street off of, just to the, McCullough, thank you. Just to the west of that.
And I know Phil could probably show, but here, so just because people are gonna be asking, oh, but this is McCullough here coming down. So this coming in here down to the mill site.
That's right, yeah. So, and in that same location, Mayor, that would be where we would find a location to thread that pathway that would connect through the two hillsides, through the old fluid path that would connect back over to Pebble Beach as well. So this would be the trail location would come through here.
Absolutely. And if anybody's taking the opportunity to climb up to the ends of the hill and seeing it's really a unique part of the trail, the group is having a trail system and then you come down and come across, continue on your path all the way to Naze eventually.
Exactly, exactly. So just, I think, you know, the building allows in its location, due north, in fact, facing, due north, exactly, the arena and the pool configuration. So it allows that park to really integrate with that front face, we call it that porch that faces onto the lake and could actually be perched above the lake, depending on how we grade things. That allows us for activities like playgrounds, like a dog park, an off leashed dog park that is adjacent to, but not on the water. And could include other recreational uses, including sport court activities with pickleball, tennis, hardcore activities that are off to the east of the building. All of these things, there's plenty of room to play with and shape those as we see fit and with public input and there as well. And on the south side as well, we also, on the next slide, Phil, thank you, shows that that relationship to the south facing side, a good sunny plaza area that could be pickup and drop off area. It also allows for future proofing if we decide to add other elements like curling or bowling, which Phil and Amy will get into as well. So that zone allows for additional phases in the future to be accommodated. But in the, in the current configuration, that plaza, we see as being a really important draw and activity center. For those of you who have kids who play hockey, that post pregame and post game workout is just as important as being on the ice. So, and then at the points of interest, we talked about the industrial legacy. We, you know, we sit there, outlets like the jack ladder, the image in the upper left. The pump house building, which is the only remaining building, could be reused or reinterpreted to tell a story about the mill's history on the site and its legacy associated with the community. And they create a series of linkages that articulate the trail. Could be adult fitness spots along that route as well. We estimate that you can do a loop on just on this site of about a kilometer, of a loop kilometer around the, around the site. So that's a nice distance for, for active users as well, with the A L C being the heart of that activity. So, you know, again, a lot to be determined in terms of site activation and ground truthing, but we like this location. In the, in the cost, you can see the six point two million for three point six hectares of park area, which includes largely the parking area, but the plaza as well, and some of the porch that faces onto the north side. That's built into our base costing. But if we wanted to enhance that costing with more, a parking expansion right to the water's edge would add another for roughly four million dollars, which would include just, you know, refurbishment of the ground, which is largely gravel right now, adding soil, adding trees, adding site equipment, et cetera, that can outfit this to its full complete vision right from day one and provide access to the water that I think everyone is really desiring. So a point of contemplation for council and for the design team as we move forward.
I think in that regard, and we will get into this question about the financing aspect, you know, that would be if we can get government to assist and come to the table as they used to in the past. But I don't see the thirty cent dollars from federal venture governments, that'd be really nice. But we can get some sorts of fundings, makes it the bigger picture, look easier to go from fifty six to sixty, incorporating all the exterior landscaping for that initial site.
And notwithstanding that the work that you're doing with that four million is greenfield, pardon me, brownfield rehabilitation. It is, it is truly improving the site and its ecological health as well, the wellness of the site, not just for the community. So I think there's, there's additional funding that could be sought.
So I'm sure your team has noticed when you took the tour this morning and today, that, you know, development of a thirty unit, two bedroom facility right on the waterfront, all the adjacent property we're looking at, redeveloping as well, no different than your plan, looking at that. So it makes it a lot easier to sell a bigger chunk of property for development. And, you know, we know people now come to the communities of choice based on quality of lifestyle, not necessarily work. You can work from, you know, your iPad, your phone, but you want about the lifestyle and the quality of life you have. And we'll not stop everybody, but it really is opening a lot of doors for people who come bigger centers, getting away from those million and a half or two million dollar homes, come to a really beautiful area on the water for a lot cheaper.
And if I could just add very quickly to, within walking distance of the A L C. So if you had a seniors just a living facility or assisted living facility, then you could walk two minutes to the multipurpose room right on your doorstep. There's, it's immense value in that, which I think shouldn't be understated.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the building and looking at some of the building considerations and how some of those big block programs get moved around and to create stronger relationships to the site. We've got a series of concept diagrams here. So the first one is really just outlining the big box programs. So we've got our ice rink, our aquatics facility and our multipurpose. And then when you take those big blocks and kind of pull them apart, it creates this interior public zone that allows this view corridor right through from the street all the way to the lake. So then you take those blocks and shift them a little bit more. And this creates that covered terrace or porch element overlooking the water on the north side. And on the south side, it creates a zone for a nice sunny, warm entry plaza. And then all of the views that, that come from locating these programs where they are. So then the next couple of slides, we're gonna show you the basic planning and we'll start with the base program and that's the program that was included in that fifty six point five million dollars. And then we'll run through some of the added program that we could look to add if council and Mayor Phil would like to. So starting at the ground floor, we've got the main entry at the south end of the site. So that's where your drop off is in your entry plaza. And you enter through that big kind of double height public interior space, views right through onto the lake. On the left side, you've got views into the ice rink and associated service refrigeration spaces. And then your change rooms are accessed off of a warm corridor that runs along the north end of the site. So you'd flow, it's flow through changers, through warm corridor, through the changers onto the ice pad. On the right hand side of the, of the plan, we've got the aquatic center located along the north. So you've got lovely views of the lake from the pool, a beautiful relationship there. A central, centrally located admin space, which is the gray block right off of the lobby space, access to your change rooms, which include family and gender change rooms. And then a good community theater, which is located right off of the entry there. With its support space, the canteen and the public washrooms. Slide, yeah.
Could you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Because I think it's key, so you look at theaters, excuse me, supportive of theater in regards to the canteen. This arena was designed with a very poorly designed canteen flow because you're walking through. So has this been taken consideration in new design? You're walking through to the arena or coming back into the bathrooms or you have, and there's a big line always in front of that corridor.
Yeah, so in this design, we've actually got the canteen, I guess proper is located on the second level. And there's a smaller one here that really is just for the theater, so a smaller support space.
Okay, yeah, because this design here was never considered about the flow of traffic.
Right.
You know, you go to a movie night and there's like a hundred people waiting to get tickets and they're getting popcorn and you can't get into the arena or go to the washroom.
Yeah, yeah.
Jam packed, right? So, okay.
That was part of my, part of my question too, is like with the design, is there any particular reason why you come in like with a drop off on the south side, why you walk straight through to the north and you want to change rooms in that area? And the changes are accessible as you come in and then the arena ice rink on the, on the north side?
What's that?
But he asked whether.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you come in, you have a hallway there where you get, actually get dropped off and you go into your change rooms, kind of like walking across change rooms, then come back.
Yeah, we've looked at that, but I think when you see the second floor with the views to the lake and you're up there on the, on the terrace and it makes some sense to have the public on that side as well. Like over here, watch.
Okay, but the rink would be.
So located in the upper seating above the change rooms is what Phil's.
Yeah, you have these two go together all the time, right? You can't put these down here and the rink up here, so.
Gotcha. You get to the views.
Yeah, you capitalize on views, you know, and we do, we do realize that, you know, the arena users are going through the lobby, but the lobby's very large, it's much larger than what you have now. It's twenty odd feet wide, so it's gracious.
And just for counsel, and we all know, we all been to the arena many times and lived there most of our lives basically, but the way our arena site now is not moving over the dressing room because the dressing rooms are on this side. It's over the, there's some storage facilities underneath the features, right? This is gonna be now over top of the dressing room.
That's right.
Okay. Real different design concept.
Right. So then you've got a main feature stair off of that main interior lobby and an elevator that will take you up to the second floor, where you've got your spectator seating. We've got three hundred and fifty seats overlooking the arena and two smaller multi-use rooms, the main canteen and support space, and then a lovely crush space, a warm viewing area that overlooks the arena as well as the lakeside.
In terms of accessibility, just with a fairly aging population, it's one elevator and stairs to get everybody up to those seats?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so just to add to that, there is a second set of stairs at the very west corner or sort of east corner and that, we would need, you know, a set of exit stairs to take everybody down. But the main entry stairs is right off the employee space, the hall space.
And just thinking of like folks in, you know, with accessibility issues, would they be able to see the arena as they come in on the left as their viewing?
Yes, it would be fully glazed. Yeah, yeah, so off of that main lobby space, you have, you can view your reception. It's great in front of you and then over to the left, it'll be fully glazed, so you'll have views into the arena and then glazed along the pool side as well. So you'd have cool viewing off of that main lobby.
Like this photo right here, they're going up and arena right beside it, it's almost too much.
So we didn't feel capable of walking all the way up to the stands?
You could watch from the lobby space, yeah. It's wide enough to accommodate something for both arena and pool within that space.
So maybe silly, but let's go back to the pool. So with multiple users in there, obviously you can have some kind of a screening system here installed because there are times that classes are being held at the pool, but they don't want the public watching them. So if you have a big wall of windows, you might need a bigger cost for screening, you know what I'm saying?
Right, so we typically deal with that situation by adding internal shapes.
Okay.
Um to.
Yeah.
To accommodate programs that require more privacy.
Perfect, because yeah, there is, you see a lot of times when there's a program going on.
Yeah.
The one window we have into the pool from the lobby right now, it's closed off.
Okay.
Public swimming and all that's open, but obviously when there's certain programs of comfortability, uh people want they want to be watched by a bunch of hockey players.
Right, and I think I also forgot to mention for the aquatic center, the base program includes a four lane uh twenty five meter pool, which is like for like. Uh but we have a slightly larger, I guess double the size.
Double the size.
Laser pool um as part of the base program and then Phil will talk about the enhancement program.
Okay, so council.
Hope you you can finish that off.
And in regards to the sauna and all that equipments installed in this system, similar to what we have now?
That would all be encompassed in the change rooms or off the deck?
Okay.
Do you want it songs like one per gender or one shared or?
Well, uh you know, I and I don't know where if it is a design in the pool like I I take a look at the candid complex in Vancouver. Where they have uh the saunas that are open, like they're all glass, so you could sit in the sauna and look at the pools though. Watch everybody because they're very inaccessible from the pool deck. Is that similar to this?
We we haven't designed that level of detail yet, but that can absolutely be accommodated.
Yeah, make it kind of complex.
Kind of engaged.
Kind of engaged complex.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's the the saunas are literally off the deck, you got the main pool, small floor with laser pool. And then the two saunas are there with windows.
Yeah, there's there's capacity in the square footage to accommodate. Saunas are not that lucky.
No, 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 but they're 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 very well used.
Yes, yes.
But it's not included in base cost.
Right, well, we could design that concept in.
I don't usually put them in the rest of the change rooms.
Yeah, either or, but I think you could do either or, but I think you have to design it.
Then you need two versus one.
Right, so I think one sauna should be re- redesigned into this concept because it is very well used.
Yeah.
You know, like, so whatever that piece of square foot, I think our sauna is probably maybe a hundred, two hundred square feet, it's not big. But it's small, so maybe you're gonna do maybe go three hundred square feet or something to accommodate.
It's the mayor's office, so it should be nice.
Well, thanks for that. But but it's just it's just a future thought when you're designing to have that because if we're getting after the six million dollars to build a pool with no sauna. Yeah, it's gotta be a little bit of pushback on us.
Well, that's exactly the conversation we want to have right now. If you feel that that is important, we will look at the area that is there now, the cost and see if it impacts it. Um bigger if bigger program increases like this pool.
Yeah.
If you wanted to go to six lane pool, if you wanted a dedicated therapy pool, so you have one pool at say eighty six degrees, one pool at ninety four degrees, one pool at a hundred and forty degrees. You wanted that whole range of 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 experience, it takes more square footage. It takes more mechanical, it's slightly larger change rooms. It does add costs and those costs are a higher higher square footage costs because they are setup costs are more. So you're looking at two and three quarter million more to add that amount of square footage. Um so that's a consideration for for you.
Yeah, for sure, and I mean personally, I think that all the public consciousness we had is that we are one of the few communities along the corridor of one of the the lake. That has a pool other than the bigger centers. We really believe that's quality of life for our community, so we want to continue to have that. And majority of the respondents and the and the participation of the uh the surveys said they wanted a pool as well. So, you know, adding on to it is great, but I think reality is is what we have is really good. Just enhancing, you know, that program that we have right now, so addresses all the concerns.
Yeah, I just wonder, uh, you know, as well, ages and I know change rooms become a bigger and bigger issue around the gender and around the particularly we had women's hockey issue in in. In the past, how do we address getting change rooms right? Uh and what are arenas and pools doing uh to make sure that everybody feels comfortable in the space?
Well, right now, we've allowed enough square footage to go lots of different ways.
Okay.
And every municipality is different and we have to talk to your staff, we have to have org groups. Well, in the next stage, right now, we know that we've allocated enough for gender specific and for gender neutral. But it may change um for a fund where confident we have the square footage to allow flexibility.
Well, with that being said, this space and then you start putting up walls and doors, that comes.
It actually works reverse, yeah, so here we've got, we've allowed for a gender neutral change room as well as a male and a female. And that takes up more space than having, say, two gender neutral change rooms, which is what we're doing in a lot of our facilities right now.
That's where people are moving to now.
So we're more conservative in space. Okay, and just to add to that, uh just visiting a number of facilities in British Columbia, they were all gender inclusive, hundred percent. And as Amy said, we now design gender inclusive washrooms. For assembly buildings, uh and then this is, you know, a public assembly building. Um and we actually, we save space on the washrooms, we save you square footage, we save you cost. And it's they're really, they're beautiful, they're refreshing uh designs, uh they're free. And we s- we would certainly be encouraging in that direction. It is still saying, uh, you know, sitting down at the next level of detail and listening is is obviously really important.
Right.
Um so the next add on that uh is up for consideration is the addition of two multipurpose spaces. So that would be one, that would be activity based, um and the second would be a dedicated seniors room. Um those would be located down in the bottom right hand corner in the yellow. Um and that would be an additional cost of approximately two million dollars.
If that if that space is not put in, is that where the covered um, you refer to the covered porch areas?
Yeah. Okay, whether it's covered or not, that's the, we turn it into a landscape space and in the future you fill it in. There are the other two rooms above, just in case this isn't approved, we we felt. Every community center should have some sort of multi-use space, so you have two built in, which is kind of equivalent to what you have now. So it's like for like, we're trying to do like for like plus.
And and I think we'd be looking to design the theater to be a bit more flexible as well with some retractable seating so that it could potentially be.
Be another multi purpose.
Yeah, another multi purpose.
There may not be movies. In life of this.
Yeah.
Something else.
The other component which we heard uh and read about that was a desire is the track. Um so we looked at how that would get added on. Well, to start with, you have to add on the ground floor because the track can't overhang the ring, so you need the bigger square footage. That turns into a bit of an opportunity because you get more storage, but you can also have some rank level seating. Um so you add maybe a hundred seats there or benches and then more or or uh storage. Um, you know, we estimate that would add about a one point six million because you're increasing the square footage there. And then you're increasing the square footage on the second floor as you wrap the track. Around that side and the two ends and then goes along the back of the spectator seating and back again, a two lane track. Um that those two are adding four point nine million. That's probably a conservative cost because we know we're not building walls on everything, but at this point, we don't know enough. We can only take the square footage and then work with our cost consult to see if that number can come down. Um but it it does add square footage, there's no question.
But even if you don't go the three point three nine, one point six million ground one is is a lot of money for a walking corridor.
Yeah, yeah.
If you don't add that one point six on the on the ground, is there any existing storage already?
Yes, yes, we do have in the corners and 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 the back, yeah. It's not worth, not worth losing storage, we're we're enhancing. Yeah, yeah. But we actually called it a walking truck and and ground floor storage seating, so it's enhancing the arena as well, it's making it more flexible.
Because the additional seating that could potentially be added to the apron.
Right. Cause right here, it's very similar to what you have right now, and the only difference is that. You have your players benches and your penalty box all along one side and you're hacked along that back wall. So imagine we flipped that and we put the player benches and the penalty boxes all on this side and then we could have seating here, right? That's what a lot of me as well, et cetera. Uh, what is one? Yes, I did, there we go.
Okay, so another added item is the is part of the future program and that is bowling. Uh that would be located um at the south side where we got that exterior plaza. We've left space for bowling to potentially uh occupy part of that space. Uh and that would come at a cost of uh two point five eight million approximately.
And if if we were to look at curling, um four sheet curling with a curling lounge. Looking at ten point two million because we're adding area. Uh one of the embedded costs if we decide to um make this a true future program is that we have to ensure that our refrigeration is upsized for that. So that's an embedded cost in the base building.
So 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 let's go back a moment and say, okay, what if we add the curling and that enhanced the available vehicle walking track without additional cost of a four million?
Well, possibly, yeah, we could probably add something like that, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we not sure where the building ultimately ends up on the site, sometimes the curling may end up over here.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And then you're not getting any benefit, right? So we can't promise, we we could explore.
True. Again, all those things cost money, so we have to continue to figure out where we're going to be at once we get into more detailed design and concept once uh. We get the, we're probably in the fall early, early, early summer, early winter this year.
Yeah, I think right now, as Ian and and Daryl have said, we're at the point where we we know a base building program. And if you believe that that's the good start, that we stay with that and we bring back the more defined costing later on.
Right.
This is it in summary, this is the base building, this is what fifty six point five. Yeah. The garage package.
That was sugary.
Yeah, I think that's an easy way to present it.
Yes.
As much as it's nice and neat to have it all, it's probably not realistic, it's on it's on the numbers. Uh but is it possible for like the like making like a like an infographic? Just for like, even though I don't know if it releases the to public just yet, but just so they know, you know, this is your base, you want this ten. Plus two, plus five, plus eight, and it's like. Ten, four to ninety million dollars, but like, so something's gotta go, right?
Unfortunately. Presentation, you can't do an open public.
Yeah.
Uh it will be posted tonight, the presentation will be posted via our social media and website tomorrow. But the whole point of the presentation is transparency.
Yeah.
Right, this is the cost of the base, these are the costs of the items. And going forward, right, those are the questions we're going to wrestle with uh correctly.
Yeah, and then uh I had the opportunity to ask this in the in the post session, but I wanted to ask you again in the open. And uh appreciate your answer the first time around, but if we look into uh adding services to the building. And looking into, you know, if you added like a library or daycare or something along those lines, does it open different different funding avenues? If you want to give your response.
Yeah, it's it's a very valid question, uh you know, and and you know, as we just, you know, we we went through in the last sixty minutes, when you add square footage, you add cost. And even if we're able to attract funding dollars and let's say fifty cent funding dollars. You know, there's still fifty cents that must be raised by the municipality or other sources to meet that fifty cents. So, you know, it doesn't bring the cost down whatsoever, it actually adds to the cost. So then, you know, just like adding the curling club or or adding the bowling alley as add-ons, you know, the very similar scenarios. Even if, you know, we take the curling club at ten million dollars and we got a five million dollar grant, the municipality still has to come with five million dollars. So it's a five million dollar add-on to the base cost that we presented tonight.
Fifty cent of dollars probably on the generous side, right?
At this point, uh you know, like it's, you know, if we can get fifty cent dollars on a fifty six million dollar project, uh would be a step.
Yeah.
Council.
Would there be the opportunity, let's like the bowling alleys, two million dollars of maybe going to the community or going to groups and saying, hey? If we could fundraise a good chunk of that cost, that we could do the bowling alley, let's say, right from the start? Yeah, that's the, those are questions that are going to come to council, uh you know, as we proceed to phase three. You know, we we've already, you know, Mr. Paris and I have had that discussion with our seniors club. You know, they they very much want a dedicated space in in the new active living center and, you know, are are committed to fundraising or to do that. So, you know, that becomes part of a formal fundraising strategy that becomes part of those next phases. So I've, you know, I guess the the longer answer is absolutely it's a possibility, okay.
So it becomes difficult to do with that, considering as reality is that, yes, uh everybody's willing to give a dollar or two. From a canvas to two million dollars for bowling alley, it's hard to sustain that. No different than the additional space for the seniors at one point, two million dollars for that common space, it's hard to get to achieve that. You know, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollar donation from from, you know, Mrs. Smith is great, but. We need, you know, two hundred Mrs. Smiths donating two and three and five thousand dollars to make it even viable to move to the next level.
Yeah, I think another thing like this is looking way too far ahead, maybe, maybe not, is like, you know, once you you build it. You gotta run it, then you gotta operate it, then you gotta staff it too, right? Turn it flows different challenges and you add so many different things.
Well, I think the original concept of this bill was the reality that we would be saving money hopefully on operational aspects because we got new upgraded updated equipment. Hydro G talked about, you know, utilizing some of the lake maybe potentially for heating cooling. You know, those are things that we can take advantage of compared to what we have today, maybe there's a there's a cost saving there as well.
Yeah, if if we think back to, you know, our our two thousand and seventeen planning and and, you know, it's 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 a little bit outdated, but it's certainly still relevant. You know, when we compared, you know, that bill, which was a thirty, you know, million dollar bill, but similar size, around seventy thousand square feet. Our our, you know, our annual cost savings on the operating side were estimated to be around one point one to one point two million dollars. So, you know, those are real numbers, you know, we'll we'll certainly, you know, work at, you know, firming those up again in in twenty twenty three costs going forward, but they're real numbers. So there's no question moving to a new building that's modern, um is going to save us money on the operating side.
And that's key when you're looking at a fifty six million dollar mortgage or even best case now thirty five to forty million with fundraising or government grants and subsidies. Uh your substantial uh mu- uh annual uh, you know, uh operating cost for just a mortgage alone, that long, you know, easy building and paying the propane cost. Uh, you know, it's a great presentation, I guess it's in council's hands for the next steps. Uh as you see there, and uh we will give our administration direction once they bring back that final report. For the next level of of design, uh we know this is probably what you call is a C conceptual design, we're at C maybe or B plus.
Concept, council C.
C, so we gotta get to A. And 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 that's a that's a better way, but that's a little bit more money, right? So.
Yeah, you know, administratively, you know, the the, you know, we're exactly where we want it to be. You know, at this point in twenty twenty three, based on the the budget that council has approved or for administration to work with. You know, we're proceeding, you know, you know, I I think what we heard clear tonight was, you know, we're headed down the right path with the base programming. Um, you know, and and the landscape design, um we're proofing out the site from that perspective, you know, at the same time. You know, we're doing our due diligence around the environmental and uh geotechnical work we have to do. Um and once that work is completed over the next, you know, eight to nine weeks, you know, we're able to move forward, you know, putting more detail together and coming back to council. Uh likely in in, you know, a a late fall timeframe, um you know, asking permission uh to proceed to design development, which is really, you know, what we need to move forward with. I think, you know, for administration's perspective, the one thing we can't lose sight of is the momentum we've gained to this point. That we have to keep moving forward with, yes, there's a cost to it, there's no question, you know, but time, you know, I'm not going to say is of the essence, but it's important. You know, we know costs are going to escalate, we saw it in the presentation, we need to keep completing our due diligence. To arrive at a position where council can make that sound final decision, you know, what's in the best interest of the community. You know, which really is going to be a legacy project for the next forty or fifty years.
Absolutely, I think in uh Phil's comments on the slides about prepared and ready to go. We've got is one of the key aspects to getting into the government grants and subsidies that we're looking for. So us to go banging on both provincial federal government stores for those grants and subsidies. Uh as well as low interest loans, whatever it looks like, we gotta be prepared and willing to to construct. And that's going to be key for this council, so we will definitely wait for administration report on the next steps in regards to that uh. That conceptual design and that final update, and then we'll make that decision, I'm assuming sometime fall, like I said, early day fall.
I I that's that's our goal, just to be in front of council, uh as we, you know, we, you know, for administration, we started our detailed budgeting uh September and uh, you know, we'd we'd look forward to it for the council. In October if we're, if not November.
Great, well, thank you very much, all of you for coming here and uh explaining this process to us, obviously you've dedicated a bunch of time to this and uh. We're looking forward to hopefully having that next level and next step to uh the growth of our community and having A L C built and designed and then built it within the next. You know, three to five years would be awesome and hopefully everything falls into place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and thank you to Paulie for listening, and if you have any questions. I'll means reach out to any one of us as a member of council as well as our administration team. And we will have an opportunity to have uh many different uh public sessions in regards to information gathering over the next several months. Because as we heard from council, whether or anybody else, there's opportunities for people to fundraise and donate and 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 add on to this. We need to know that as well, but we need commitment as well, no different than we just seen from our local hospital, there's like fourteen. No different than we just seen from our local hospital, building fourteen beds. You know, they need to raise two million dollars, it's a lot of money and uh, you know, so we're all going to be competing with that. So that's that's when it becomes difficult for the small community. So thanks again, appreciate it, and uh we'll adjourn this meeting at about six thirty. Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Good night, everybody. Thanks, Jamie.